Twenty-five Board of Trustees meeting, time being six thirty-one P. M. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Proton Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you.
Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda this evening? No. All right, now it's time for public comment. Members of public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record. Okay. Public comment. Uh, first up, we're gonna have a presentation on the two thousand twenty-two Town of Wellington, Colorado, financial statements with independent auditors report and Mr. Nick Ror David. Will, uh, the Finance Director, Treasurer, will present on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Thank you for your time tonight and patience as the Finance Department has been working to bring the town current on audits for previous year's financial statements. I'm Nick Ror David, Finance Director and Town Treasurer as of April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. As Ms. Garcia shared in the Town Administrator Report at the last board meeting, the Town of Wellington, Colorado Financial, excuse me, the Town of Wellington's Financial Statements with Independent Auditors Report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, has been completed as of January thirty-first of this year and submitted to the Office of the State Auditor for Colorado. It has been included in the packet for tonight's meeting and is available on the Finance Department's page of the town's website. I also received confirmation last week that it has been accepted by the State Auditor and is reflected on their website as well. It's my pleasure to review the highlights from the two thousand twenty-two audit with you tonight. As you're aware, the audit for the two thousand twenty-two financial statements would typically have been completed and submitted to the Office of the State Auditor by July of two thousand twenty-three. Due to turnover in the Finance Department over the past several years, audits of the financial statements for twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three fiscal years were delayed. The audit for two thousand twenty-one was initially submitted February twenty-seventh of last year and subsequently revised in June by Mayberry and Company, LLC. Our consultant, Don Rhodes, gave a similar presentation to tonight's in, on April ninth, two thousand twenty-four, regarding the twenty-one audit. The board then contracted with Hinkle and Company for completion of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and two thousand twenty-four financial statement audits. Jim Hinkle worked with Mr. Rhodes to review internal controls, transactions, and account balances in preparation of the independent auditor's report presented tonight. The review also included an onsite visit on December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, and an update from Mr. Hinkle was provided to the board at the work session that evening, giving background on the process, timeline, and future expectations. The video of that presentation is available on the town's YouTube channel. The biggest takeaway from the independent auditor's report of the two thousand twenty-two financial statement is that the Town of Wellington received a clean opinion, which is the highest praise an auditor can give. The financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, also known as our wastewater, water, and stormwater enterprise activities, and each major's funds' financial statements were presented fairly. Changes in financial positions and cash flows for the year were also represented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Some other highlights from two thousand twenty-two financial statements are that the total net position of the town for all funds on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two was one hundred and seven point five million, growing by three point eight million more than the previous year. Net investment in capital, such as buildings, streets, and equipment, was sixty-seven point one million, which is nearly sixty-two percent of that total net position. Funds restricted for emergencies, streets, and open space in parks are an additional seven percent of the total net position totaling about seven and a half million dollars. Over thirty-two point eight million, nearly a third of the total net position on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, are unrestricted funds that may be used to meet the town's ongoing obligations to citizens and creditors. The fund balance for the general fund grew by one point seven million to nine point one, and all governmental funds grew by two point two million to an overall fund balance of sixteen point five. The enterprise funds' total net position, net position is what we call fund balance in enterprise funds, at the year end was seventy-three point six million, with a positive change in net position of one point nine million. Outstanding debt at year end in governmental funds decreased by nearly a quarter million dollars and increased by nearly forty-two million in the enterprise funds, largely due to the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. In terms of the auditor's opinions, I do want to point out that auditors only present opinions on the basic financial statements, which are the statement of net position, the statement of activities, financial, excuse me, balance sheet, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances or net position, statement of cash flows, and notes to the financial statements. Required supplementary information, while included in the auditor's report and utilizes the same audited numbers as the basic financial statements, does not have a additional opinion presented by the auditor on those statements specifically. Given the clean opinion of the financial statements for two thousand twenty-two, including the opinion that financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, and each major fund were presented fairly, no adjustments to the town's current budgeted program or projects are necessary at this time. Estimated beginning fund balances for two thousand twenty-five were developed using the fund balances from two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three financial statements that had not yet been audited and the estimated fund balance for, ending fund balance for two thousand twenty-four. In preparing for the two thousand twenty-six budget, ending fund balances from completed audits will be used to provide an estimated beginning fund balance. Thank you again for your time and your support. While I was not a town employee in two thousand twenty-two and only provided support to Mr. Rhodes for this audit, I'm happy to take questions at this time and will do my best to answer or follow up at a later point. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz?
I had one question, but if you give me a minute, I actually, I have to find the page.
Okay. Trustee Moore?
Yeah, so you don't get a clean audit opinion without having very sound policies and practices around your finances, and so I first want to call that out. It's not easy, especially when we're, you know, doing these retroactively. So I just want to say thank you to the staff for being diligent and frugal with our budgets year after year and to you, Mr. Ror David, for jumping in and helping to get these across the finish line. And I hope that moving forward, the community can look at these and feel really sound, knowing that the town is, uh, being good stewards of our funds. So, thank you, everybody, for your hard work.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Cannon. Um, that would be page sixty-three, and it's just a simple question. Line item E says reconciliation negative fifty-one thousand two hundred nineteen sixty-four. I'm just curious what that amount is.
I don't have it in front of me. Um, I will look that up and get that back to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Cannon?
Mr. Ror David, thank you so much, and Administrator Garcia, thank you. This is an assurance, in my opinion, that, that the town has been managing its finances correctly. Uh, the, as, as Mr. Ror David said, we had some turnover at the Finance Director position, and the people who are in that position are no longer there, thankfully, and I'm glad you're here. Nick, to be honest with you, I was generally surprised and pleased with your performance. So, thank you for doing that. Uh, I did have one point on, uh, page X in the, uh, before you kind of get into the, uh, the actual statements. I think it was a typo, but it's probably just minor. I can even point it out to you now, right? They, they show governmental activities from twenty-two, twenty-one, business-type activities twenty-two, twenty-one, then the total says twenty-one and twenty-one, it should be twenty-two, twenty-one.
Got it. I'll take that back to Mr. Hinkle, thank you.
Thank you. Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Wigan?
Just want to commend you on a job well done. I mean, getting a good opinion, clean opinion like that is extraordinary, and that just shows you, you and the whole town staff has done a great job. So, it'll be interesting to see what the next couple of years are gonna end up with so we can compare them out and we can make some good decisions at that point, too, so. Appreciate you guys, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Daly?
Between this and our award-winning budgets for two years in a row nationally acknowledged, I really hope that those who are watching now and as we get into budget season again, as we do every year, early and earlier, it seems, that there will be a level of trust and care in regards to how money is handled by the town. In the past, there's been so many concerns and questions, mostly because of just a delay in audits. So as these audits come to fruition and they come back with wonderful results, as we see in front of us right now, I just really hope that that is taken into consideration when it comes to trust, um, moving forward. It's very easy to be, uh, critical of the town and how funds are managed, but from an independent audit, uh, we see that those practices are sound. And, um, and that was back in two thousand twenty-two. My expectations for the following audit, for the following year, I expect it to be exactly the same and, of course, have very favorable results, based on, you know, my experience and how we've interacted with financial dealings. So I am excited to see those come. Um, I'm not surprised whatsoever at the results of this audit, and I look forward to continuing to build trust with our community, improving that through these, these type of activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton?
Well, thank you, Director Ror David. Um, obviously, same comments everybody else has. Big thank you to, uh, Hinkle and Company, Mr. Rhodes, the leadership team, the Finance Department. It's, it's been a long road to get here, um, and so I just really want to thank you guys for all of the incredible work that you've done to get this over the finish line. I did, I was gonna point out the same, uh, typo that Trustee Cannon had. There's one other one on page eleven of the packet. It's under the third bullet point. It says the Drainage Fund Net Operate and Oncome. I think that's supposed to be income, but I'll email that to you. Other than that, I just want to ask the, you know, one of the same questions I always ask, which is, uh, as far as the timeframe for the two thousand twenty-three audit delivery, are we still looking to be on track as far as that goes?
Yes, I actually met with Mr. Rhodes yesterday and our auditor last week, and we are submitting every document that they have requested. We have about six pages worth of documents, from procedures to checks to account balances and trial balances and spink statements, and we're, all of that is going through their portal as we speak.
Excellent news, like I said, really appreciate the hard work, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. You're almost gonna be here for a year now, which is pretty incredible. Been very pleased with your performance and everything you've done and the hard work you've put in. Obviously, staff, all of you guys played a huge part in, uh, getting this, um, audit set up and getting it done and completed, and I'm super excited for the new one that'll be coming up. Is that supposed to be end of July? Is that tentatively?
Twenty-four, tentatively by end of July, twenty-three, somewhere in the middle.
Okay, okay, perfect. So then we'll be up to date and, um, rocking and rolling, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, next we have Ms. Garcia, Town Administrator, and she will be presenting the two thousand twenty-four annual report.
No rush.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees, Patty Garcia, Town Administrator. So, thank you for the opportunity to present the two thousand twenty-four annual report for the Town of Wellington. This report reflects our collective progress, achievements, and ongoing initiatives as we strive to enhance the quality of life for our community. I'd like to begin with some key statistics, um, for our community. Our population now stands at a little over twelve thousand people. Our median household income is a little over a hundred and one thousand dollars. The median age in our town is, is, is young, thirty-three. So that's, that's a young community for anywhere on the front range. Wellington was incorporated in nineteen oh five, and we've proudly grown while preserving our heritage. We currently employ a little over sixty-three full-time equivalent staff dedicated to providing exceptional municipal services. Pursuant to the Board of Trustees' strategic plan, our vision is to honor our past while, while building a welcoming community. Our mission is to provide outstanding municipal services for today and tomorrow. These guiding principles inform the direction and priority of the Board of Trustees. One too many? Go back. Usually I just hit back. Oh, wait, anyway, I skipped a page, and that's okay, because it's in your packet. The, the, the page that I skipped is about the, um, water treat, water treatment plant expansions. So, I'm sorry, Public Works, I skipped your page, it's there somewhere, but, um, there, I cannot, see, I don't have my glasses on, so I can't see, which really sucks. There we go, there.
Oh, you got it.
I got it, kind of, no, I still skipped it, it's okay. It's back arrows, it's back arrow. There we go. Guys, usually I'm okay, you know, but it's, but I'm standing in front of you.
You're doing great.
Thank you so much. Anyway, so achievements over the two thousand twenty-four year. We've accomplished some key milestones. The Water Treatment Plant Expansion Project was necessary to keep Wellington compliant with regulatory requirements and meet capacity needs. The projects were both completed on time and under budget, which is huge, a huge accomplishment for the team of Public Works. As other municipalities are going through this process, we are, we are an anomaly becoming by coming in under budget. I really attribute a lot of that to Bob Gowing, who stayed really tough with our contractors when they were trying to create change orders and things like that. He's like, no, you figure it out, make it happen, this is our budget. So I really appreciate staff's, um, you know, holding, holding people to the, holding their feet to the fire to make sure the project got done on time and under budget. So the next slide is about our businesses. We welcomed an array of new businesses to Wellington this year, all of which support our community. These are businesses that have invested in Wellington, and we are excited to have them here. I encourage all of our residents to check out, check them out, the new businesses, the old businesses. We need to thank them for being here. So part of doing that is, is patronizing their, their businesses. So, the town is busy on a daily basis. A lot of residents, a lot of people don't know all the work, other than potentially Trustee Cannon, all the work that goes on, on a daily basis at the Town of Wellington. There's, we've listed some fun facts here. Three hundred and forty-seven million gallons of safe drinking water delivered. I love the seven hundred fire hydrants flushed. That's a lot of work, and that, that gets done on top of everybody's daily duties. A hundred and seventy miles of snowplow, four hundred and ninety-four utility work orders, ten thousand feet of wastewater line inspected. I'm glad somebody does that job. I think it would be a rough one. The next page shows another, um, some other highlights. What I really like is that last one on the far right, library circulation. Thirty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-three books circulated through our public library. That is huge. The, if you ever come in here during the day, and there are always cars in the parking lot, people in the library utilizing our services. Mr. Ross, Ross has done an amazing job in creating some, some really cool activities for our town. So some of the town highlights, there's much to be proud of in two thousand twenty-four. We earned our first, as, as Trustee Daly talked about, we earned our first Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award. So many words, but this is really exciting. This is something that we've wanted to do for years. I, we found, um, minutes from years, decades ago, wanting to get something like this accomplished. And Kelly Hodling and Nick Ror David both worked on this project and made it happen for two years in a row. It's a big deal. The Main Street Revitalization Award, so with that four point one million dollars, we've advanced this vital initiative to enhance our downtown area's accessibility, aesthetics, and functionality. Really excited to see that project go underway. It'll be later this fall, probably early, early winter, when we finally get to work on that, when you finally see some work on that. We're already working on it. Community engagement and outreach, we've increased outreach and engagement with our residents by hosting town halls, creating press releases, and coordinating with local media for additional coverage. Um, our, our new communications manager, Jerry Martin, has done a fantastic job in making sure our word is getting out, and you'll see the posts coming up on a regular basis about activities and things that are happening in Wellington. That's, that's all Jerry, he's doing a fantastic job of keeping our residents updated. We've had everything from fishing docks to reading programs knocked it out of the park this year. We're fortunate to have staff that continue to excel and go above and beyond for this community. Looking ahead, this year we'll talk about the Water Rate Study, the Revitalizing Main Street Project. We're creating opportunities to support businesses during the construction project. We're going to start work on the Transportation and Mobility Master Plan. There'll be parks and recreation and library activities all over the place, really focusing a lot on the downtown area to bring people in the downtown so they are aware of the businesses that are, that are available for their use, and events and more. So, in closing, Wellington has seen a tremendous growth and change. With your continued support, we build on this momentum to ensure our town remains a vibrant, inclusive, and welcoming community for all. I encourage everyone to choose Wellington, choose Wellington, and I look forward to your feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Moore?
So it's really easy throughout the year to get bogged down by all of the hard things, the challenges that need to be overcome, and the loudest voices, and, um, this is just a testament to all of the hard work and really the caliber of the staff and the trustees that were sitting, um, before this last round were elected, that you've accomplished so much, and I think that really to take a moment and pause and just congratulate yourselves about that, um, is really necessary because we move so fast that looking at it all together like this is so exciting, and I really just can't wait to see what the future for Wellington has. So thank you to everyone who helped make all of these accomplishments happen, some big things, so thank you.
Trustee Teetz?
It's awesome. I love seeing the little, uh, key point, pull-up, bullet points put out on what was accomplished for the community. Um, one thing I will say in looking through the town highlights and being involved in this community for as long as I have been, I see so much community feedback and everything that the trustees have accomplished. So many people coming to public meetings and requesting or asking, whether that be the ADA dock at Parks and Rec, or it be the Park and Play Days, which were a vision, a huge vision thing for, I know, Billy, but the Parks and Rec's department, too. So I think it's awesome to see a lot of, when we hear that the community feels that they're not being heard or not being supported, it's awesome to be able to look at all of this and see. I've sat through a lot of these requests myself from people who've come up here and spoke in public comment and asked the community for things. So it's awesome to see that you do get listened to and that people do, can make a difference in our community. And the one thing we need to realize is, is at sixty-three town employees, it's a lot of accomplishments, and y'all have done a massive amount of work to be able to achieve what's laid out here. So I'm extremely grateful to all of the town staff and everybody that is involved. I think we have a unique community here because we do have people get so involved because they love this town. So I think it's wonderful to see it come from every angle, and there may or may not be a few naysayers along the way, but I think in general that we are forming a pretty amazing community.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
We appreciate everything you have done. Uh, we are no longer a small community anymore, and I know we've had a lot of growing pains through this time, and I think you, the staff, has done a fantastic job. And, you know, we're listening to the people. The budget building on the water is one of the things that we're, uh, looking at doing. I think you're actually instituting it, so I mean, it's, we're listening, so that's good. Water rate study, hopefully that'll be an interesting thing happening here this summer. Uh, one thing that we can never underestimate is the water treatment and wastewater treatment coming under budget. I mean, that was two, two and a half years, going through some of the squirreliest, craziest economies that we've ever seen, and for us to come under budget, under time and all, well, not quite under time, but close, that's a tremendous accomplishment to our staff. So we can, it, it's just fantastic what they've done there, so appreciate it. Again, we got a lot, a lot of work to do, and you guys are doing a great job, and you're listening, and that's a big thing, you know, they are listening to the people, thank you.
Trustee Cannon?
I'd like to, uh, say thank you to the town leadership, the staff, under you, Kelly, the department heads. I've always been proud of the level of commitment that Wellington employees have for their job, for their community. They always go the extra mile, and, uh, it's, it's pretty great, it's pretty great. So thank you to all of you and what you're doing. We've got some, we've still got challenges, but you know what? Even with the challenges, to get all this accomplished is pretty amazing, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We're looking.
Trustee Daly?
Two thousand twenty-four was a monumental year for Wellington. To the projects that came together and the construction projects that we underwent and finalized in two thousand twenty-four, uh, will secure water treatment for our town for decades to come. And it was, uh, a situation in which we were approaching a very, very scary situation that was now negated because of the completion of this project. So if you were to, in the future, look at history books on Wellington, which there are some, by the way, if you want to see that, it's at, at our wonderful library here, there are history books of Wellington. This will be the year in which the future of our town was secured. So, uh, it's a big deal, and so many years went into this. Uh, I remember working on water treatment stuff just from the perspective of the Planning Commission six years ago, uh, where this project was underway, and it was well underway prior to me ever having eyes on it as well. So I have to say, above and beyond anything, um, thank you for this project coming to fruition again and us securing, uh, water treatment for our entire town. On top of that, other projects were years and years in the making that, that came to be in two thousand twenty-four. PROS has been prioritizing the fishing dock for many, many years since past board members, you know, really, uh, brought light to the concerns that our, our community has for ADA, uh, mobility. And so I'm really excited to, 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 uh, celebrate that this spring. It went in late enough in the season that we thought we'd wait, from the PROS perspective, parks, recreation, open space, and trails, uh, from that advisory board, that they would wait to celebrate, that being installed until more people can come enjoy and hopefully in better weather and use it for fishing, perhaps. So, uh, we're really looking forward to the opportunity in the near future. The park signage as well was on their list, and they've been pushing for years at this point. The Park and Play Days was an initiative that- The Park and Play Days was an initiative that of course our Parks and Rec team, or department has done, but initiative to engage the community more and get people out and playing. Everything that you look at from the perspective of these huge achievements in 2024, bring people out to spend time together. So whether that's in our parks, at our libraries, in one of the best gathering places or within our businesses. I, I don't know how many amazing, wonderful times I've had sitting at Soul Squared. This is a gathering space. So not only are these initiatives building sales tax for our community, they're also providing space and place for us to love where we live. And between PROS, the Main Streets program and our amazing staff that we have, we've had so many achievements in the last year. To say that all of our problems are solved, absolutely not. So if anybody maybe is criticizing 2024 and saying that we didn't do enough, I get it. There will always, always be work to do and we are doing and progressing on that front. We're not letting up by no means. But to sit down for a moment and to acknowledge what 2024 was to the town of Wellington, I guarantee you, this will be the defining year for our town. Not that we suddenly turned around or anything, but it, towards a progress of ensuring a brighter future that we can sustain for our kids to live in our community. And not only just live here and be able to live here, but enjoy living here and to be able to reinvest in our town as, as our children grow into adults and live here. So I'm very, very proud of this report. Thank you for putting it together. And by the way, the way this report looks, this is economic development. This is showing that we invest in our own town significantly by the, you know, from the terms of 80 million plus dollars for, you know, just water treatment alone. But we invest in our town, we see its value, we're improving all across the board. So other people should come here and do that too. So I love this document and I think that everyone's doing a wonderful job. And I'm just, it just makes me excited for the work we're doing now and what 2025's report's gonna look like. And I'm very proud to sit up here and be a part of this. Thank you.
Mayor Porton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, yeah, yeah, you know, just to piggyback on a lot of what the board's already said. I mean, 2024 has been absolutely monumental year for our community. And I did just want to give a big shout out to all of the Doone businesses. I mean, businesses and residents are the lifeblood of this community. And there's quite frankly, a lot of these things we would not be able to do without your support. So I want to give a big thank you to everybody that's, you know, been, been involved in spending your sales tax here. Very important for, for how we move forward. Also just want to give a big shout out to Director Gowing and the Public Works Department. The wastewater and water treatment plants expansions have, are, as far as I know, the largest infrastructure projects that we've ever completed as far as the town of Wellington goes. And, you know, that is going to be what sustains our community for, as trustee Daly said, decades to come. So very important things. And, you know, as trustee Wigan said, you know, we, we do still have a lot of work to do. But I know all of us are up for the challenge and we take all of these things very seriously. And obviously, you know, we're going to continue to grow the community and, and keep things moving in the right direction. One other shout out, I'm a big infrastructure person, so a big shout out to our partners at Comcast for bringing broadband infrastructure to town in addition to some of other entities that have already been here. But big shout out to those guys for bringing in another option for residents. So, and then of course, a big thank you to the rest of staff, obviously our library folks, you know, our leadership team, our finance department. I mean, all of these guys work, work their butts off to get the stuff done. So I just, a big thank you to everyone, so.
Thank you.
I really enjoyed this presentation and how it was put together. Sitting up here, it can be very difficult to see you making any change or helping the town at all at certain times. So be able to look back at this and see everything that the town staff has done, employees have done to maintain the town, all of their accomplishments. Everything that this board had, you know, talked about at some point or future boards that has came to fruition over the last year. It's nice to see, to know that, that we are making a difference and setting this town up for a good future. And I'm just, I don't know, it's just nice to see it in this aspect because I've always been hard on myself. And so I'm always like, you're never doing enough. And I think a lot of our staff's that way and I think that's maybe why we're so successful at what we do. Takes grit and all of you guys have that. And so thank each and every one of you for being part of Wellington and fighting for it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I have had a request from the Kinzleys to have this printed off so they can have it in their office and also over at the chamber. So, well, we're gonna make some pretty copies and get it out so they can pass it out to the people who are coming and interested in being in Wellington. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will now recess the regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being 7:07 PM. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer?
Here.
Trustee Teats?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Mayor Porton Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse?
Here.
Mayor, the authority has a quorum.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item C1?
Green Events Inc. Spring Equinox Special Event Permit.
Thank you. And Miss Anna Hill, the town clerk, will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. And my presentation is rather brief, so I'm going to present from here just to save some time. Green Events Inc. submitted to the local liquor licensing authority an application for a special event permit on March 23rd, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Staff received the application on February 10th, 2025. Notice was posted at the location and proof of posting affidavit was included in the packet for the authority. The application includes a diagram of the requested beer garden located at 3999 GW Bush Avenue Lot A, which is the field outside of Deppen Brewing. There will be onsite mobile food vendors. Portlets and ID check will take place with the beer service. Staff has reviewed the application with stakeholders and there were no items of concern from staff or stakeholders. Staff would recommend the authority approval of the special event permit. If the authority does approve, staff will send notice to the state that you did approve it and we will issue the permit to the applicant. I'm happy to answer your questions, Mayor. I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Do you guys wish to make a statement? I gotta work, I gotta work on that. Are there any questions from the board on this item? Trustee Teats?
No, I just have a comment. Welcome back. So I was able to attend and volunteer for this event. I got to make amazing yogurt parfaits last year for this event. And the amount of people you guys drew into Wellington was impressive and very grateful. The way you guys handled how the beer service went, I was extremely impressed with. Everything was secure and it was awesome to be able to be on the giving side of this event. And I'm grateful that you guys have chosen to come back to Wellington again this year.
Yes.
Perfect. Any comments from the public on this item? No, no public comment. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for Green Events Incorporated Spring Equinox.
I'll second.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teats?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for considering Wellington.
Yeah, thank you for coming back.
How long a race is this?
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right, I will now close the Liquor License Authority Board and reopen the Board of Trustees meeting, time being 7:10 PM. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title of the items on the consent agenda?
The February 25th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teats?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Thank you. Next we're onto reports. Are there any reports from the town attorney, Dan Sepienza?
Not at this time.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Garcia, town administrator?
No meeting next week due to spring break. It's a work session, so we'll just be not convening and we'll, we'll post that appropriately.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Staff reports were in the packet. Any board reports? Okay. Trustee Cannon?
Three things, four things actually. I went to the legislative session at, for the Colorado Misfully two weeks ago. That was a wonderful session. I got a chance to speak with one of our, our representatives. It was a good day, so I like going to those. And this Friday, there's a policy committee meeting that I'll be attending virtually. Then I got two questions. We have our first ever St. Patrick's Day parade. Are the trustees going to be doing anything? Are we going to be marching and are we going to have a float? You're not going to take that trailer again?
No. No, I'll be there.
I'll be there too.
I'll be there.
Okay. And then where are we with the bylaws and Bob rules? That's good.
It'll be on the agenda on April 15th.
Thank you.
It's a work session.
Work session.
Thank you. And two more things?
That's it?
Okay. Okay. Trustee Teats, did you have something?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Have an amazing spring break.
Thanks. Trustee Daly then?
I also want to talk about the St. Patty's Day Parade and Festival. So it's an entire festival that's going to span starting at nine. So in addition to the parade, there's also a fun run that's being hosted by the PROS Board, Parks, Recreation, Open Spaces and Trails. And it is not a 5K, it is .5K. So then someone said half of a 5K, someone said that to me. That is also not the case. It is .5 of one singular K. Right. And it's at a brewery, so it's going to be a great time. It is made for folks of all abilities and ages. It is family friendly, stroller friendly, dog friendly, bring out the entire household. And it's going to be a fantastic way to start the day. Also, part of that event, what's really cool about this wonderful event is it's coordinating with PROS, our advisory board for Parks, Recreation, Open Spaces and Trails. And the Main Streets program is also participating. American Legion is participating. There's going to be a beer garden, there's going to be the .5K, there's going to be a festival to learn about great opportunities to be, to conserve in your home. There's going to be the parade, of course. And then as part of it is a lot of the businesses are coordinating activities and events, whether it be music, whether it be Irish dancers. There's a ton of different events happening all throughout downtown, Main Street and beyond. So I hope that people will come out and plan to spend the entire day with Main Street for this event. And I'm just really excited, it's going to be fun. I will be participating in parade events, but with two other organizations. So I'll be around and with parade staff and then also around for all the festivities. I'm so excited, it's going to be so much fun. So I hope everybody in Wellington comes out and I hope we make this our next, our next great tradition in addition to Fourth of July. So I'm excited to see you all there on Saturday, this Saturday. Come out by nine.
What's the schedule?
Yep. Well, 10 o'clock is when the .5K starts. I guess I'll be there early for other things. Parade is at 11. 11. So .5K is at 10, beer garden's at nine. Is that right?
Yes.
Nine?
Run start.
So you can drink at the beer garden for a whole hour prior to running. .5 of 1K. I think I'm in. And then, and then the parade at 11, which is going to be fantastic. And the festival will be in the park. So many things to do, so many businesses to go to. It's going to be a great, 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 great day. So that's what I had to say. I hope everybody comes out. I will be there.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, I don't have nothing further? Nothing further. Okay. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F1? G1?
Thank you, Mayor, for the clarification. For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to 24-6-402 for ECRS and for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to 24-6-402 for BCRS regarding matters with the North Pooter Irrigation Company as required by CRS 24-6-402 to D.5 to A and to E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for 90 days through June 9th, 2025.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion, second.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yep.
Trustee Teats?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Porton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, that motion passes?
Perfect, thank you. We are now entering into executive session, time being 7:17 PM. For those of you that are of the public, please see your way out.